Yeah, it's by, it's by.
Call the media to order start with the Board of Regents.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll consider May 17th, 2017 agenda. Any additions, deletions, corrections? Myself, I'm going to add one at the end of new business. We'll put it as 10B. And it's to discuss renting out the Meadowwood property again for farming. Anything else? If not, I'd look for a motion with that addition.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Sean, seconded by Jessica to approve the agenda for May 17th, 2017 with the addition. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Then we go to comments, updates, and concerns, and then we start out with citizens. Anything from citizens? Counsel? Jim?
I just wanted to, for the counsel is not aware, we did postpone the meetings with Arlington on policing, considering what they have going on from a petition over there. So we thought it prudent that we stop meeting with them until they get their issues resolved. So if anybody's asking, that's what we did, so.
What is the petition called?
That they want their own police department over there. They had 400-plus signatures presented to their city hall, and so they need to take actions on that before we should, you know, continue our discussions.
Anything else from counsel? Don?
Just a quick update on the Walter Fuller property for the 2018 project. Me, Kim, Brent, and Avery are going to go out to the property with Walter tomorrow and just walk it through with him. He just, he just wants to see what property we actually want. He's concerned about the effect it would have on the person renting his land. So we just thought it best to go and show him, and hopefully that'll alleviate any concerns and lead to a quick resolution of getting the easements that we need.
Anything else from counsel? I just have one quick reminder to put out in the public is that water tower demolition may keep everybody aware of it. It's June 11th. Going to be Sunday morning, early. Downtown will be out of electricity for approximately four to six hours. So this, that's one date to keep in mind, June 11th, the water tower coming down. That's all I have. Okay, then we'll move on to consent agenda there again. Any additions, deletions, corrections? If not, I'd look for a motion to approve as presented. So moved.
Second.
Motion's made by Jim, seconded by Sean to approve consent agenda as presented. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries. We do have a public hearing tonight, but we'll move back to that when it becomes a seven o'clock because that's when the time is posted, so we'll come back to that. But we'll just keep moving forward with our agenda. So we'll start out, number seven there, communication requests and petitions. You've seen the Forever Young newsletter, mail letter from Sibley County. Any questions on any of that? Or any discussion? Okay, then we'll go to department and committee reports and action items. And we'll start out with Administration Department to receive the 2016 audit from Tom.
Hi, good evening. Nice to see everybody again. So we'll go through the audit report, and we'll go through the management letter, which is a clear-covered report there. Like in the past, if there are any questions with the audit, I'd be happy to answer them, but this kind of recaps everything for us, so. To get started, just a couple of the findings as we, as we had talked about in the past, just the kind of the segregation of duties with the limited staff, which is kind of starting on page two of the report. Just to kind of make sure that the counsel is aware of that and kind of reviews dispersments and proper approval as part of kind of a compensating control there, you know, with the number of staff in the office. We can't have full, you know, segregation of duties and elimination of that finding. So just kind of continue to encourage to do those proper reviews. If we go to page, let's see, page, page four. We just had a few material audit adjustments this year. We had some adjustments that, two additional accounts payable, some capital costs, allocations, and accounts receivable and due from other governments that were significant that we made this year. You know, I think overall, the audit adjustments keep decreasing. So we'll keep, keep working with staff to keep improving on that. But those were a couple items that were made that were material for this year. On page five, one compliance, another matter. We did have a note on unclaimed property, which basically is just some outstanding checks that are over three years old. I think kind of taking a look at the outstanding checks, kind of take a look at that, a combination of either, you know, reissuing the checks, or if they happen to be voided, you know, I think that needs to be determined. Or otherwise, we can submit it to the state for unclaimed property. But the statute says that anything over three years needs to be submitted to there. So I think kind of taking a look at those outstanding checks and get those cleared up for this year is something we could take a look at and get taken care of. Turning to page seven, which is the general fund activities. So the overall total fund balance at the end of the year was about, almost 1.4 million, which is about 80% of next year's budget. So as you kind of see those percentages there, we've certainly have kept the percentage of fund balance to next year's budget relatively flat over the few, last few years. You know, I know the counsel has some transfers to the capital improvement fund to kind of keep that general fund balance, but it certainly have been steady and kind of consistent over the last few years. So that's certainly been, been good for the city and staying within the, within the budget. Page nine kind of outlines some of the, some of the variances with the, with the general fund compared to budget. Overall, the net change in fund balance for the general fund was a little less than 80,000 increase, which kind of is in line as, as that budget expenditures kind of keep increasing with inflation, so should the fund balance to follow to make sure that those percentages are there. So it's kind of stayed on a steady course to keep at that, at that proper, proper funding level. So, you know, some of the items that were variances in the general fund, property tax collections exceeded the budget by about 16,000. We had some additional government, local government aids of about 12,000 that were over budget, or favorable budget. And then the fines and forfeits had about 22,000 on there. And then streets and highways, both the current expenditures and the capital outlay had favorable fund, favorable budget variances of about, about 40,000 each. And the public safety and planning and zoning had some, some costs over budget on there. You know, sometimes the planning and zoning is offset by some fees that were collected during the year on the revenues. But overall, we had a positive, positive increase in fund balance for the year. Page 10 just kind of looks at the trends of the revenues for the last three years. So for, for 2016, as I had mentioned earlier, the tax collections did increase in the general fund to about 580,000. The couple of other items that were changes from the year, the intergovernmental revenues dropped a little, little bit this year, mainly because last year we had that small cities highway grant that was kind of a one-time deal that wasn't collected for this year. So that decreased those intergovernmental funds. And then miscellaneous for last year, we had some contributions last year that came into the general fund that we didn't receive this year. So that's, a couple of those items had a slight decrease from last year in overall, overall revenue. The general fund expenditures also decreased this year, partly because of less transfers out to the capital, capital fund, and also just kind of a reduction, you know, reduction in overall capital outlay that was paid out of, out of the general fund too. So a combination of those caused that decrease. Taking a look at the peer, peer group by program, you know, overall, your current expenditures comparing to other cities your size, you're right in line with what other cities spend on basically their current expenditures for the general, general fund. The peer group spends about $672, you're at $676 there. You'll notice that Culture and Rec is higher than what the peer group is. You know, that's mainly because the Aquatic Center is a part of that, which other cities don't necessarily have the Aquatic Center, so that elevates that number there. Page 12, the special revenue funds. You know, a couple of the changes in the special revenue funds, the nursing home proceeds, fund balance did decrease as in past years. That 50,000 is being used to pay down some of the debt on the, on the aquatic, aquatic parks. So every year 50,000 gets transferred out, so that is the reduction of those proceeds. The other item to notice, the ambulance did, fund balance did decrease this year due to the purchase of an ambulance for this last year. And those were kind of the main changes in the special revenue funds for this year. Turning to the next page, page 13. This, this outlines your debt service funds. So these are the funds that are paid by taxes and assessments. They are not paid by, by utility charges. So a couple of things to note, you know, we have some, some bonds that are on there, the 2007A, 2008C, and the 2008D that will be maturing this next couple of years, which are basically refunding issues that you had. So we had some refunding bonds in 15 that were used to, to kind of defuse that debt. So those will be dropping off in the next, next couple of years. But as you kind of notice, as you look down on the graph, graph below, you know, just because they're dropping off doesn't necessarily reduce your principal and interest payments over the year, just because they're refunding issues. So, you know, a portion of that debt is being paid by the escrow, escrow that is currently out there. So you'll kind of consistently see that, you know, the next 10 years, that principal and interest stays pretty steady over, over the, over the next years. You know, I think the thing that we need to look at there is how new projects play into that, as we had new debt coming down the road. I know we kind of talked a little bit about circling back and doing, doing kind of a five-year budgeting and debt there. I think that would be something, especially kind of see a sewer project coming down the road here too, that we should kind of look at some, some of that and kind of map that out, well, going forward. So I know we did that a couple, couple of years ago, and I think we should circle back and do that again to make sure that, that, that funding is in place and what this looks like for projects, projects coming down the road. You know, overall, the cash is at about 6 million, but you kind of take a look at that, a good, pretty close to 4 million of that is in escrow to pay back the refunding bonds that are, that are currently there. So, you know, in the next couple of years, that cash will drop down significantly. But, you know, they're, currently now, the debt service funds are cash flowing, you know, and I think we can kind of keep taking a look at that on, on what that looks like in the next 10 years on how that is going to cash flow. So that's probably one area that we definitely need to kind of monitor going forward to make, make sure. Capital project fund, we have the wrap-up costs in the Highway 5 project there. We do have some additional dollars in there, about 370. You know, if that, all those costs are in, probably this year, we could look at closing, closing that fund if there's any remaining dollars, it'll probably be closed to the debt service fund, and that's something that the counsel would make a resolution to close to that fund to help defuse some of the debt that's, that's currently there, or help reduce future tax levies to, as, as we move forward. The Harvey Drive project, there was about $190,000 worth of costs that will be funded by future, future proceeds down the road, but that currently has a deficit of the, of the 190. Capital improvements did increase by, you know, 500, well, increased by 75,000, and we had about 550,000 available for future projects, equipment, or anything that the council deems for those capital improvements. So, you know, I think kind of tying back to following some of the stuff that we did for the five-year plan on what capital needs are out there, I think this is a good opportunity to look at what, what dollars are going to be used for those, those capital improvements. Page 15, getting into the enterprise funds. We have the water fund cash flow. So over the last few years, you know, the, has been generating a positive cash flow from operations. As you can kind of see on the, on the bottom graph, the cash did decrease mainly because of some unspent bond proceeds that came through, and that those capital costs were paid for this year. So currently, the water fund has about 850,000 in cash. What we kind of take a look at for that minimum target that we want for cash for just strictly operations, kind of look at about 35% of operational costs plus one year of debt service. So that number's right around 385,000. So with that, you know, you're looking at roughly, you know, 450 of cash that is available for future capital items or anything above, above that. So, you know, it's certainly healthy, but as more projects come down the road, I think, you know, that's something we need to take a look at and making sure that if there's more debt that's added, that's going to cut into reserves and, and, and anything else related to that. So, and currently in the water fund, we have a little less than $3 million in bonds payable in that fund, so. Page 16 is the sewer fund cash flows. So over the last few years, we have had, you know, positive operational cash flow from the sewer fund. There is some remaining debt that is being, some dollars being transferred out for some debt payments that are, that are remaining that will be kind of finalizing with some of, some of the bonds that are dropping off. But because of that and some capital items there, our current cash last year was about 162, and then that dropped to about 72,000 for this year. So the sewer fund's really been kind of across the board based on some projects that have been going on and just kind of the overall debt service cash flow. And as you can kind of see, it's kind of, it's definitely under what we kind of recommend for minimum, minimum operational cash balance there. So I think, you know, especially, you know, taking a look at a sewer project coming down the road, this is something that we'll need to look at rates to make sure that we kind of get those up to where they need to be and how the debt service payments rolling into this project have an impact on the, on the sewer fund. So, you know, there's not as much debt in the sewer fund. We have about 679,000. So that has kind of continually been decreasing, but I would maybe like to see this fund get a little bit healthier and, and have a little bit more of capital reserves than the sewer fund. You know, you kind of, you know, some of these funds have the excess reserves as, when we go into the storm sewer, there is some excess reserves in that too. But, you know, I kind of like to, you know, have each, each fund, you know, self-sufficient. So, you know, there's things that we can look at on, on rates, on how we can try to balance that and what the future needs are for there. So there's a lot of different options that we can do to try to, try to get these rates in line so that each fund is, is healthy. So that's certainly something to consider that we can, we could take a look at over the summer. The next page is the refuse fund, overall cash flow, which has been pretty break even over the last few years. I know we've been in a deficit in the past. The good news is, is that we're, we are out of that cash deficit for this year, and it's gradually increased over the last few years. I think we could certainly kind of continue to, to do that and review rates, but I think we're getting up to that point where, you know, we're at where we want to be for the operational. So we'll monitor that. If costs go up, we'll, we'll look at rates again, but for right now, well, that's moving in the right direction. Page 18 is the stormwater fund. Each year, we've had certainly increases in cash from operations there, and we have built up a healthy reserve in that fund. We have about 900,000 in that fund for there, and, you know, just kind of operational with debt service payments and, and expenses. You know, we, we look at about 115 as, as the balance there. So we do have, you know, over, over 700,000 that's there for capital reserves. So I think there's, you know, once again, taking a look at what, what costs are out there for future stormwater projects, and how can we allocate charges to balance that out, but there are certainly some good reserves there. The last page, page 19, is a few of the ratios. You know, the debt service coverage is at 128%, which basically means we're generating enough dollars to cover debt service in, in the utility funds. You know, it's some of the capital that had been coming out of the, the utility funds have been drawn down the reserves a little bit. So, but overall, we are cash flowing to the debt service. The debt per capita, you know, is, did drop this year. You know, it's at almost 8,500. That's going to drop off significantly next year just because of those refunding issues that, we have two refunding issues that will be dropping off, and then 18 that will, that will continue to drop off. Still, definitely on the higher end, as, as we talked about in the past. So I think we're just kind of managing those, those bonds going forward to try to keep, keep bringing down that debt per capita there. So taxes per capita did increase slightly, but it's really kind of about, about the same rate as 2014. You know, the good news is with some of these projects that you're right in line with what your infrastructure is. If you look at the last two numbers there of the capital assets left to depreciate, you know, some of the, some of the streets are maybe just a little bit below what the average is, but the overall infrastructure is in, is right in line with other cities that you are. But that kind of ties to what, you know, the, the debt load that you currently have too. So, you know, I think it's, you know, it's just important to kind of balance that out. You know, what are we looking at and balance the projects going forward? So it's a kind of a fine line of managing the debt and then keeping the infrastructure up on there. And I think that's where kind of planning out five, five-plus years is, is an important procedure to kind of go through, and, and we should probably revisit walking through that again, so. So otherwise, you know, I think we're, you know, doing pretty well. The audit, audit went well, and, you know, I think, think things are heading in the right direction.
Any questions for Tom?
I just, yeah, I agree. We need to work together this summer to come up with our, you know, this next year, 2018 project is going to hinge a lot on, you know, well, how big. Hope to have a lot of different options there to look at, alternates per se, and see what we can afford, I guess.
Yeah.
And then that, whatever you can bite off, we'll see what, and then put together a five-year plan going forward to kind of see how much and when we can, and what we can afford.
Yeah, yeah, you know, because I, I think we still, you know, you know, at times we, and bond rating calls, you know, they, they do have some concerns on the debt load that we've kind of consistently done. So I think it's kind of a balance on what can we do to bring that down a little bit, but yet not neglect the needs that, that you have there. So it's, it's going to, going to be a balance, and we could certainly work with you guys and talk through it on what that, what that looks like over the next few years.
Problem that every city's got.
Yeah, yeah.
Thanks, Tom.
Okay. Well, thank you. If there's any other questions, feel free to give me a call.
You bet.
All right. Have a great night.
Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, there should just be a motion to receive and approve the audit.
Okay. Then I'd look for a motion to receive and approve the audit.
So moved.
Second.
Motion received and approved the audit made by Sean, seconded by Jessica. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries. Again, thank you, Tom. And we move to A2, Wellhead Protection Project with Justin.
Good evening, Mayor and counsel. The Minnesota Department of Health requires cities to complete wellhead protection plans, and they're done in two parts. Part one was completed by the Department of Health because of the city's size being below a population 3,000, the Department of Health completes that. Part two, a consultant needs to, to prepare those wellhead protection plans for the city. Our firm does do this type of service, however, to meet the Department of Health's timeline with our workload and capacity, we wouldn't be able to, to meet that timeline. So in the best interest of the city, we recommend hiring Birol Water Resources. I've worked with Marilyn Birol in the past. She's very good at what she does. She specializes in wellhead protection plans. That's, that's what she does. So it's, it's our recommendation to the city to move forward with that. It's a professional services agreement, so you wouldn't have to go through a bidding process. I'd be happy to answer any, any questions beyond that.
They're also the only ones in the area that do the phase two.
There's, there's not a lot of firms that do these, that's correct. And like I said, we, we have worked with her before. We've partnered with her because she does it so well. In this particular instance, we would have her do all of the, all of the work.
And this is what was presented by Ty that we told him to go back and.
And get a second.
Get a second, right? So we're back to where we started again, so I guess that's, I'd have to look for a motion to approve to move forward with the.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Jessica and seconded by Chad to move forward with the wellhead protection project as presented by Ty. And the firm is, the name again?
Birol Water Resources.
Birol Water Resources.
Yes.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Justin. Well, we got a couple minutes that I think we can get through 8B2 yet. Don with the ambulance relief.
Members of the council, a few months ago, the ambulance service met, the ambulance service has had a relief association for a couple of decades now. And they had met as a group and wanted to change their bylaws because they wanted to change a few things about setting up retirement for members of the ambulance service. The changes to the bylaws were presented to me just to look through. And looking through it, the concern I had is that there is not authority, statutory authority for an ambulance relief association like there are for police or fire relief associations. So I became concerned that this entity existed that shouldn't really exist. Really, the money for retirement compensation should be going through the city and be provided by the city to the ambulance department. So what I ended up doing is I created a policy. So, what I ended up doing is I created a policy for ambulance service retirement compensation that matched the, what the relief association wanted to accomplish. And you can see that policy in your packet. What this would establish is that any member of the ambulance service who works twelve hundred hours a year will get a retirement benefit of one thousand one hundred dollars for that year. It'd be a five-year vesting process where after five years of service, then that person would be entitled to, entitled to the full one hundred percent amount of one thousand one hundred dollars each year of service. If it's four years, you get eighty percent. If there's three years, it's sixty percent. If it's less, less than that in years of service, then they don't get anything. So, I developed this policy and then members of myself, Kim, the mayor, and Jim as the ambulance liaison, we met with the ambulance service, went over this with them, answered any questions. They didn't have any concerns and they ended up recommending approval. So, now it goes to you for formal approval. I just, we're going this way because the city fund should be operated through the city and given by the city and just want to make sure everything is being done legally here.
And that's what was stated, if you look back in the minutes too, where I said it that this will reflect and we stated at the council meeting that ambulance recommended and agreed that the city will take over the accounting of the Gaylord Ambulance Relief Fund, so it'll be coming through the city and also the accounting firm will continue due to the billing for the actual routes and rules and stuff with that. So, basically it's going through the relief fund, which they agreed on. We're doing the accounting instead of them doing their own accounting to become apply, comply, compliant with statute. So, I'd need a motion to move forward with that policy.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Jessica, seconded by Sean to move forward with the updated ambulance relief policy. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries. Okay, that brings us to seven o'clock, so then we'll back up to our public hearing. I will now open the public hearing for the twenty seventeen Northwest Sanitary Sewer Improvement Project and turn it over to SEH.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, thank you, council, Gaylord residents. We're going to be talking. I know this beam's in the way a little bit, but I'll kind of stand back a little bit as much as I can so everybody can see. We're all here tonight to talk about the Northwest Sanitary Sewer Improvement Project. My name is Brent Keditz. I work with SEH along with Justin Black. We've been hired by the city of Gaylord to prepare a feasibility study to look at some sanitary sewer improvements in our area. If you haven't already done so, there's a sign-in sheet in the back of the room that we'd like you to sign in so we, we know you've been here, you attended the hearing. And then also there's some handouts at the back of the room there that has the, our agenda for tonight, for the public hearing, as well as a figure of proposed improvements and a construction schedule, or a project schedule, actually. So, with that being said, I'll kind of go into the purpose of the meeting. The purpose of this public hearing is for us to present the feasibility study to the council and the residents and for the council to consider, consider moving ahead with the Part of the city process for public improvement processes is the assessment policy and assessments using Minnesota's statute four twenty-nine. It's basically a way for the city to finance some of these projects. I'm not going to read everything. Basically, it gives the city authority to assess portions of the project for broad range of different improvements, special assessments for sanitary sewer water mains, streets, that sort of stuff. Basically, reducing that reliance on that general tax levy, so only a certain percentage of a project can be assessed according to the city Gaylord's assessment policy. We'll kind of talk about that a little bit later, but I just, that's a good slide to put up. It's, it's just the, the actual statute. So, the main project location is, of course, the northwest area of the city between Eighth and Tenth Streets from North Avenue to Nicollet. This, this map just shows the existing sanitary sewer where the manholes are located and what type of pipes we're looking at, working with here. As you can see, there is some existing eight-inch PVC in the northern area. What we really want to look at in this report is, is the clay pipe, which is the eight-inch PCP. Those are older clay pipes. They have a tendency to break down quicker than the PVC. Their lifespan is, is, we are at the end of their lifespan, basically. So, that, we'll kind of get into that a little bit more here with the issues that we've So, what started this, the, the whole project was an intense rain event similar to what we had today up here back on August eighth, twenty sixteen. We had some sewer backups in some homes on the northern end of the project. I just want to touch on, you know, the sanitary sewer system really functions normally without normal weather conditions. That means everything flows through, there's nothing backing up usually. Now, on these extreme rain events, that's when we start seeing issues usually. And what that indicates is, is a high INI problem, which is inflow and infiltration. And what that is, is water, rainwater getting into our sanitary sewer system, creating less flow through the pipeline and creating backups on the backside of that. So, and, and other issues that, that basically help that or stop that from happening is, is the size of the pipe. There's protruding service taps, which means PVC service is, is coming into the main line of the pipe and offset cracked pipe joints, meaning that the pipe is settled on one side and flow can't get through. It has a ledge, basically, to, to go over the top, so it decreases flow that way and that creates backups, backup line. I have a few pictures here. These are from the televising reports that we received earlier this year and, and remember when we looked, when we're looking at these, these have been cleaned and jetted. Also, these are during a very dry period. It hasn't rained for a week to a week and a half, so it, it's not like if we were to go out and televise right now, it'd be totally different from this. But, this is one of the northern portions, the PVC lines that you can see are very, very well cleaned. The only problem with that area is the homes are very low, the services are very flat. And you can see right here on these services, these are the services that go to the houses, these holes here, they are, there is hardly any distance between the flow line and where that service goes in. So, basically what happens if, if this pipe were to fill halfway up, so does the service, and then that is what creates those backups in those homes. So, if we can clean out the pipes below that where the water flows down this way, basically coming out of the stream, we can alleviate some of the issues that are happening in these flat service areas. We can continue, get the flow to continue through the downstream pipes. And that's just a really good picture of the issues in that area that aren't necessarily issues, but that are contributing to some of the backups that are occurring in that area. The next slide is a good picture of the clay pipe and newer pipe. This is a, a bad joint, offset joint, basically, where we have cracked clay pipe connecting to a PVC pipe. And in this instance, the flow is actually coming out of the stream and flowing in this direction, so it has a lip, basically, to try and go over. So, there's, there's deposits, there's stuff that can get stuck on that lip and create backups upstream of this, this portion here. So, the next slide here is, this is a picture of that clay pipe again with root intrusion and INI. And that, that line that you see there, that's actually water running through that crack. And like I said, it's a very dry day, so if water's coming in on a very dry day, you should see this, you know, we don't know what it looks like right now, but if we were to look at it today, that, that'd be double that. So, basically, anywhere where roots can come in, water can come in. So, that's, that's what we're going to try and address here with this project. And then this, this picture shows also an offset joint, the old clay tile, the new PVC tile, or PVC sewer. Basically, what happens is water intrudes in, deposits collect on that edge and basically this is an eight-inch pipe. Now, this is restricted down to about a six-inch pipe with deposits here. So, we're going to try and alleviate some of that by what I'm going to talk about a little later here. And then finally, this is one of the services that actually is in service right now. So, you look at this and you're wondering how, how can anything flow through this and it does, but very slowly. So, we have quite a few services that look like this and we're going to try and clean these up as well, talk about that a little bit too. So, those are just some of the slides that, you know, we based all our recommendations on here and at this point, really, they are recommendations as it is a feasibility study. So, that gets us in kind of the scope of work. These are the items that we're proposing to do on this project. We're going to be working on some cured-in-place pipe lining, which I'll talk about a little bit later. Pipe bursting, we're going to be doing some sanitary sewer spot repairs, basically digging down the pipe and fixing the issue. We have one manhole that needs to be replaced because it is very old and falling apart. We are proposing to line all the sanitary manholes, basically creating a watertight seal within those, so water can't get in through the manholes. And then we have some street patching restoration, minimal turf establishment with this project. So, like I said, this is what we're proposing to do here. So, I'm just going to start out on the north end here, this light blue line is the PVC lines that were pretty decent when we looked at the reports. And what we're recommending there is to just put together a regular cleaning schedule, keep those pipes as clean as possible, so no deposits, get, get backed up on some of those real flat lines. The orange line there is the cured-in-place pipe. Those are areas where we can use this trench, trenchless methodology to basically create a pipe within a pipe. And the green line is a pipe bursting section. This area is through the church area underneath the concrete driveway. And the only reason we can't run a cured-in-place pipe through that area is there are multiple offset joints in that area, like that picture I showed before, where you'd have to dig down and do a spot repair in it. And if, if we have to do that, we might as well dig the whole thing up, which in turn would cost more than our proposed pipers. And I'll, we can talk about that a little bit later too. Now, the purple line is a small section that needs to be replaced, which was actually replaced last week, I believe. So, that part won't be part of the project. And then again, the manhole rehabilitation, basically lining the manholes that we have there. So, so I just want to talk about cured-in-place pipe lining. Some people may not know what it is. It's a trenchless method for repairing existing pipelines. Basically, trenchless is you don't have to dig it up. There's little digging, cost-effective, less disruptive than typical of open trench excavation. And then again, the CI P P process is a jointless seamless pipe within a pipe. So, what that means is it's basically a felt liner that goes through the existing pipe that is cured inside the existing pipe and creates a, a new flow area for the wastewater trail. And I have an animation just real quick here to show what that, what that looks like. It's hard to explain without showing the animation, so I'm just going to do that. And I'll kind of explain the process here. All right, so basically, a truck rolls in, sets up the front manhole. They have apparatus here that they use to invert the liner. They send it through the machine. You see it's inverted there. It's filled with resin. They send it down through the manhole, down the pipe. Once it's done that, they send either steam or hot water down into the pipe and that cures that resin. Then they send in machine, a robotic machine to cut the service laterals out, so the lines coming from your home to create that hole. So, and everything's done and then the televising equipment gets sent through that pipe to inspect it, to make sure everything was done correctly. So, that's kind of the gist of, of the... All right, so basically, this is how, what it looks like when it's done. I got some before and after pictures. This is a, an existing pipe and after it's done and lined, it looks more like that. Basically, it looks like a regular pipe. So, that's how CI P P is, is prepared. Now, we'll look at the pipe bursting section. Pipe bursting is basically what it, what it does. It's replacing the existing by inserting a new pipe within the existing pipe of same size or larger diameter and bursting that existing pipe. Again, it's, it's a trenchless process utilized in situations where open trench excavation or CI P P can't be done. And that animation, bear with me through this again, is probably a little bit better Basically, it's the same, same type of process, just a little bit different. They have to install a machine in a pit. This would be probably between the manhole and the, and the curb line. This machine is hydraulically operated. They have other machines that go down through the manhole on an inch cable system, but this is a good description of what pipe bursting is. They send pipe through the existing pipe, hydraulically, hydraulically with this machine, all the way to the other end where they connect to a, a bird pipe bursting head that's connected to the new pipe. And that pipe is hydraulically pulled back through, breaking that clay tile up and inserting the new pipe. I worked for a company for the last eight years that did quite a few of these projects and it works very well. So, that's kind of how pipe bursting is done, just a real quick video on that, so everybody knows what we're talking about there. So, what you'll see us... So what you'll see usually on a pipe burst project, this is the pipe above the ground. This is probably a smaller diameter pipe. We're going to be working with probably a 10 inch diameter pipe. The existing is eight, we're going to be bursting so the inside diameters are about the same. They basically pull that pole head down through the pipe and burst it like that picture, just like the animation showed before. The next thing that we're going to look at doing is the manhole rehab. We're going to fix all the leaks that are coming in by injection grouting and we're going to coat the inside of the manhole with an epoxy resin to make sure no water can get into the manholes. So those, those are pictures of, you know, before and after. So you can see the difference in the structure of the manholes. So we'll end up with a better project that way. That leads us into the next item on the agenda is estimated costs for this project. We broke it up into a couple of different sections, the street curb gutter driveways. This is a small portion because it's a trenchless technology. We're only going to be doing a one step spot repair, one manhole in two bits for the pipe bursting. Sanitary sewer is of course a large percentage of that. There's quite a bit of work for the CIPP and the pipe bursting in that, which total project cost 373,000 estimated right now. The project funding, and this is just a rough estimate of where the funds for this project can come from. Twenty-five thousand will come from neighborhood assessments and, and these two sanitary utility fund and the general tax levy to pay for a portion, these, these are just rough estimates where that money can come from. Absolute savings of 3,000. The assessment policy for this project follows the same assessment policy that has been in place since 2007, actually 2008, where street curb gutters 25% assessed, sanitary sewer is 25% assessed and then service lines for water and sewer are 100% assessed. And this is, this is exactly off of the current policy that the city has in this project. I guess the assessment rates for this project. So I just want you to concentrate kind of on the notes portion of this slide. This is a rehabilitation project for the most part, improvement project for a small portion of it. Rehabilitation projects don't warrant the need for assessment. So that 429 process that I talked about before doesn't apply to the wires portion of this Rehabilitation, the CIPP portion is considered maintenance and may not be assessed. The assessment rates on this table are for, unfortunately, the one property that will be assessed, will be assessed, and that's the church property. And that's basically the assessment cost broken out for the church for the pipe bursting As cited by Doc's help. A pipe bursting is considered an improvement. It's, it's not, it's, there doesn't have to be an old pipe there to put in a new pipe. So this is a new pipe. This is not a maintenance part of, like CIPP is, it's more of a maintenance, whereas pipe bursting is a random pipe. So I just wanted to kind of make that a little clearer for everybody to understand. Which brings us kind of to the assessment hearing. We're proposing it for around August 2017. We'll sign out notices and more detailed information will be provided at that time, at that, at that hearing. And then the rate will be determined by the council prior to the hearing. That kind of brings us to the schedule. We're going to work on this project this year. Hopefully get the bid in by July, fairly goes through correctly. The assessment hearing, like I said, will be probably go close to that August 16th date. Construction's starting around August 1st and completing more than likely in September or sooner. Should be approved for project timeline based on the order that needs to be done. So with that, I have a few minutes for questions. So I guess who has the first question?
Okay, this is a public hearing, so it's opened up to the public. If anybody's got questions, to the presenter or to council.
Well, my name is Paul Krotzky. I'm pastor at American Lutheran Church and obviously the $25,000 stuff that's all in our congregation, our church members. So I'm just curious to know more about why that decision had been made? Why is the city allowed to go on the church property, break up our parking lot and then assess us $25,000 for a project that I don't see how it benefits the members of our church?
Well, the first part I can answer, we're not going to be breaking up their parking lot, are we?
No.
That's what I thought. But you can answer the rest and the assessment...
As I said in the article in the newspaper two weeks ago, you'd be cutting through our parking lots?
In, yeah, that, that's probably, that's now 100% correct. So what we're proposing to do is pipe bursting underneath it. So we'll be opening up the road at each end and pipe bursting underneath it so we don't have to open cut that whole part. Only part that we will have to open cut is the service connection, to reestablish that service connection to the line. So we're not digging up any of, we are, we'll be digging up portions of the aprons from the gold, but that's, that's all we're really proposing to do at this time. And...
City right of way?
City right of way, yes. It is, that alley there is a city right of way where the sanitary sewer is. So technically, I mean, that is owned by the city.
Can I make comments a moment or do I have to ask questions?
You can make a comment.
Okay, well... As a representative of American Lutheran Church, I'd just like to say that this city assessment...
Just before I, before you go any further, why don't you come up to the podium so the camera can catch you for the people that want to watch it at home? And introduce yourself again.
Yeah, my name is Paul Krotzky. I'm pastor at American Lutheran Church. I've been the pastor there for about 17 years. When I first read about this in the paper three weeks ago, I guess I wasn't surprised that the work needed to be done, but I was surprised that the church would be assessed $25,000 for the project. So with that in mind, here are reasons why I think the assessment on the church is unfair or unreasonable. Number one, the church does not benefit from the project. As I understand it, the project is to alleviate flooding in the basement of people who live in that part of the city, but the church doesn't have a basement, so we wouldn't, wouldn't benefit from that. The church is the only entity being assessed. None of the homeowners that live in that part of the town are being assessed, as I understand it, people who would benefit from the project. The proposed assessment seems far too high. $25,000 assessment plus interest payments, I assume, is a great deal of money for a small congregation. We have about 300 members. That'd be a pretty heavy burden and would affect our ministry. It creates an adversarial relationship between the city and the church. You know, it's easy to say we're putting an assessment on a church, but that church is not just a building, it's people. There are 300 plus members of the congregation, mostly residents of Gaylord, many of them voters, who are being assessed indirectly. It's going to be, well, I wrote this one prior to the meeting tonight, that it would be a major inconvenience for our congregation, thinking that the parking lot would be disrupted, but apparently that's not going to be much of an issue. And then also the fear that the church will most likely face future street assessments. The, the church around the church building are in very poor condition. Eighth Street is especially poor condition and I assume at some point that will be repaired as well, which will be an added assessment onto the one we already have. According to the article in the paper three weeks ago, it said that we could appeal the process. And so I did check into that. I emailed the city administrator three weeks ago today, asking for information on how we could appeal the process. She responded to me that day, said she'd get that information to me on Friday and I still haven't received it. I've emailed her twice since and have not received any information about that. So I'm not sure how we go about...
Before you go too much further, the, the questions and concerns that you're bringing up are actually concerns that go to the assessment hearing. This here is just basically the feasibility report to actually do the, do the project. And very good concerns, I'm not downplaying it at all, but everything you're asking it us to listen to right now is actually stuff that should be presented at the assessment hearing that he talked about in August.
Okay, well, that's why I asked before.
You do have the, the right to appeal it through the assessment hearing process and so forth.
Okay.
So if you had anything on the project itself, that's the questions we wanted to stay towards that right now, not the actual assessment.
All right, thank you.
You bet. Any other questions of the project and how it's going to be done? Will you come to the podium, please? State, state your name also.
Cheryl Lindgren, I'm church council member at American Lutheran Church. So mine is a project question, I guess. When do you anticipate that you'll be doing, doing the pipe bursting on our church property and will that affect our accessibility to the church lot at all or even into the church building? Because people are walking from the parking lot into the church and that's our main entry.
So we will work with the church on this project to create access to the parking lot at all times. I don't think that's going to be an issue. The only part that may, we might have to reroute people around the parking lot a little bit is when we do the service connection. That's within that, in between the two manholes in the middle about of the church where the service comes in. So that will have to be dug up and, but we will accommodate the church with the project.
Do you know how long that part, portion of it will take? Is it going to be days, weeks?
I would say that the pipe bursting would take up to a week.
Okay.
For just that portion of the project.
Okay.
With some restoration, you know, lingering on a little past that, but the actual pipe bursting, you know, I've seen it done in about three ways, but there's digging to do and that sort of stuff, so.
Okay, thank you.
Just a, a question about the process that's being used under the church parking lot? Why can't that be considered maintenance or use that same type of, of work?
So we have, we have discussed it with many other cities. It is because the CIP process is maintenance, you can assess that. So the pipe bursting is putting a new pipe in the ground, which is an improvement project. And that, and that can't be assessed and that's why that is, has to be assessed, whereas the CIPP is not.
So CIPP can't be used underneath that driveway?
Not in that section. So I kind of talked, alleviated a little bit before to that section specifically on how there's so many joint offsets in that section because of that old clay tile, that we would have to go in and make multiple spot repairs in order to line that. And that would basically cost more than the pipe bursting. And then you'd, you'd have to pay for all the spot repairs, plus the replacement of all the concrete driveway between the two roads. So this is feasibly more cost effective than that because of the joint offsets.
And Brent, wouldn't you have to go in and dig up that pipe if you didn't do the pipe bursting?
Yes.
You'd have to excavate the drive, or the parking lot at that point?
Yes. Did I answer your question?
I think so.
Any other questions? Again, I'd want to remind you of, as the church, when it comes to the assessment process, to make sure to attend that assessment hearing and bring up all them concerns again and follow through the process there. Okay, that ends our questions.
All right, and then I guess I paired a resolution for preparation of plans and specs, which I didn't speak into the...
So what resolution number do we have, Kim, for that?
It would be 2017-12.
So then I'd look for a motion of 2017-12 to approve the actual scope of work for this project and approve the feasibility study.
So moved. Second.
Motion's been made by Jessica, seconded by Sean to approve 2017-12 resolution for the work of the Northwest Sewer Project. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All saying aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. And again, reminding that in August for that assessment hearing. So that brings us back to the Department of Committee Reports. We've got one unfinished item there and that's HC to EDA with Chuck Klemic. Chuck, if you just want to wait just a couple of seconds, we'll let council chambers clear.
Make sure that resolution actually gets in the record since we don't have it in
Well, I want to see it next week, next meeting. I almost voted no on that.
Okay, go ahead, Chuck.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council members, good evening. I actually have two requests I want to present to you tonight. One, you, there's a letter in your packet you read concerning some new programs we'd like to initiate, but before I talk about that, we have an existing program, the Sign and Honning Forgivable Loan Program. At our last EDA meeting, we approved three new applications totaling $6,000. We currently have in our budget 4,000 and change. So what we've agreed to in the past, I believe, is that when we run short, we would come back to council and ask for additional funding. In the past, you have allocated additional funding in the amount of $10,000 at a time. So I guess I'd like you to consider either tonight or in the future, looking at adding some additional funds for that program. If you have any questions about that program, I'd be happy to answer that. If this particular project gets done before you act one way or the other, we, we do have money to cover in, in our other accounts. So I told the, the applicants to go ahead with, with the project already.
I guess I'd leave that up to council since it wasn't on the agenda. We're kind of going outside of it, but it's a practice that we've had in the past, so I don't see no problem with moving forward with it if council wishes.
And, and it is what we talked about, you know, last time and Chad, you were still on EDA at the time, that we just come back to council and ask for more funds if necessary. EDA at the time, that we just come back to council and ask for more funds if necessary. I guess it's a good news story that they're coming back asking to do this. So, you know, I think we should allocate some more funds. I mean, we're, for this particular project, we're about $2,000 short.
That's correct.
You're correct. In the past, I think we just bumped at $10,000 at a time.
I would.
You know, we could either, you know, request the $2,000 to finish off this project or go $10,000, which would leave some money sitting for future requests if they come forward.
Or any amount in between.
Or any amount in between, yeah.
So I leave that entirely up to council, how you want to do the motion, which will tie a figure to it.
That's a good program. I just, any idea how many more potential?
For the year?
Are out there even? I mean.
Not really. I mean, they just, they kind of show up. No one comes in and says, "I'm going to put one in." They just kind of show up. So I don't know of any others in the works at this time.
What did we do last time, see all the agenda?
Can I just do it so it's on our agenda to do it next meeting?
Yeah, I'm all for it, that's fine.
Why don't, what I'm hearing, why don't you start the projects? We'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting and formally approve it then?
That's, and that's fine. Like I said, if for some reason they were to get done and the applicant requests the funding, we can cover it. That's not an issue. Okay, thank.
For the next agenda, would you want to tie a figure to that right away so it's on the agenda with the $10,000 or $5,000 or what? What do you want, $10,000?
When was the last time we put into the program?
It's been a while, and I guess my recommendation would be some, something by two. You know, they can, they can receive up to $2,000. So if we wanted to, you know, instead of going $4,000, go, you know, instead of $5,000, go four or six would be my thought, but, you know, certainly whatever we decide. $6,000 would be my recommendation maybe. On the next agenda.
Move for the $6,000 figure then, that gets two more projects out there because you're too short, right?
Right.
Okay, thank you. Then, in your packet was a letter. EDA has talked about these types of programs off and on for a couple of years. And of course, the question always comes up, how are we going to fund these? So it's kind of the chicken or the egg. Should we finalize the program and then go look for funds? Or should we see if there's funds available and then we'll finalize the program? So we don't have the details worked out, but I'll spend just a minute kind of describing the two different programs. The first one, we're calling facade improvement. This would be a lower amount, maybe $2,000 to $4,000 loan. That loan might be forgivable. It might be a no-interest loan. We've been using the city of Hutchinson kind of as our guide, but since the last EDA meeting, I've learned that Oatana has a similar program where their lower, smaller loan program is a zero interest but has to be paid back. So that's an option, too. Certain things, just, just what would qualify for that program would be things you can see from the right away on the outside. Windows, tuck pointing, doors, you know, facade improvement type things, not signs or onings because we have a separate program for that. The second one is the commercial rehabilitation program, and that has more options of what you can use the money for. It would be a larger loan, probably $25,000, $30,000 max, something in that range. Definitely would have to be paid back at, you know, a low interest rate, you know, which may vary, may be fixed. So those are the two programs. And then I went into, in my letter, where I would like to see the money come from. It's basically money that over the last few years, the city has invested in economic development programs, and it's coming, it either wasn't spent, some of it, or it's coming back to the city in the form of interest and loan repayments. So the Small Cities Development Program, which closed out the end of last year, of the $120,000 we allocated originally, we had the $62,544 left over. What happened there, we had planned on eight commercial projects. Seven were done, but we, they were smaller than estimated, so. And if I remember right, some of the, some of our $120,000 was used for residential loans also. It wasn't all commercial. But I'm asking, the second line item, of that money that went into commercial loans, and there were three of them, the principal on those, original principal on those totaled So I'm, second thing I'm asking for is that principal plus the interest that's coming back with payment. Those are all, have, repayment has started on all three of those. And then finally, for during, if you remember, during the reconstruction project, we had a, a construction mitigation loan program where we loaned five, up to $5,000 to businesses, interest-free repayment to start one year after the completion of the project. That one year was last October. So they're being paid back interest-free at the rate of $100 per month. And there's six loans, so basically $600 a month coming back to the city. So what the EDA is asking, that you consider all these funds staying within the EDA realm, and we start to recycle that and reuse that for additional programs as I've outlined. Any, any questions?
I have one, Chuck, I guess, is looking at this. I'm not knocking the project at all, but I don't, I didn't, I don't see any of this in any of your EDA minutes. Has this been run through the EDA with these figures?
Yes, we talked about this two meetings ago initially, and then I actually was going to come to the council prior, but just some unfortunate timing with the information I needed from the bookkeeper, from your accountant, from Lori. She had a vacation planned, so I didn't get the information in time, but, and I just reported at the last meeting that, that I was going to come to this council meeting. So it was really discussed two meetings ago.
Okay, then I, then I missed it in the last minute, it's all right. Discussion, council?
I do, go ahead.
Even back, I think it's been on the radar for quite a while, looking at some of these different programs. I don't have a problem with it. It's a good use to put this money coming back to the city, leave it at the EDA, and whatever they do, it looks like they're trying to set it up where they get it back also, so.
Get it back, reinvest it.
Yeah, that, that's what I'm favoring, but again, the whole board will weigh in. But I'm in favor of a no-interest repayable loan for that small one, just so we can recycle the money back.
Yeah, some of, I mean, I like, I like all, some of the bigger loans could carry risk, obviously. You know, you start handing out $25,000, $30,000, the city ends up, you know. But that, that gets me a little nervous, but I mean.
Well, I know that, I know that Oatana, again, on their program, on the bigger loans, they, they put a lien on the property for the bigger ones, whereas the small one, he says they don't bother, you know, the two to three to $4,000 program. But on the big ones, there would be a lien.
But right now, I understand what you're looking for and details to be figured out and hashed out, so I'm fine with it.
The thing I like about it is, is that it puts the money in the pot of the EDA so we can put it to work, and it's not this constant coming back and forth between, you know, going to council to ask to do this. And, you know, if we want to, if we want to support the EDA, you know, let's put the funds there and let, let the, let the EDA go to work, I guess, is what, what my thoughts are. Even, you know, it's no different than coming to ask for $2,000 for the, you know, the onings. I mean, let's put the money out there and let's, let's go to work, and then let's, you know, put the parameters within the EDA to do it.
Basically, the money's out there, we just got to let them keep it.
Yeah, that's right.
Some of it I got to go get back from you already, but not much.
I don't see no concerns with it. I like reinvesting back into the community for the EDA purpose. I guess we'd have to work out the details at this point before we can actually put a motion to it. I would think that we'd want all the details in front of us and the actual program. This is highlighting some of the monies back and forth. I can see it moving forward, but I think we should have a.
Consensus right now?
A consensus that you can move forward, and then when it comes to the plan for the actual details.
And we'll, we'll finalize the details and bring them back to council.
Through the EDA, finalize all the details, bring it back for formal approval, but consensus, what I'm seeing is just move forward with that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. Okay, then we move to unfinished business. Resolution 2017-9 approving conditional use permit for the Hot House LLC. Kim, you want to explain that?
Sure. Mayor and council, this is a resolution approving the CUP that has had a public hearing with the Planning and Zoning Commission, and they have approved to move it forward and recommend that the council approve the CUP by the Resolution 2017-09 for the Hot House LLC.
Just a little further background on that. If you remember, there was no variance that was required on that, but a conditional use, use permit was, which went through the planning and zoning in a public hearing, and the planning and zoning moved forward and approved the conditional use permit. So now it's in front of council, to formally approve it in front of council so this project can move forward. And it'd be my recommendation to move on the, what planning and zoning said that they approved, so it's, I'd look for a motion to approve the conditional use permit for the Hot House LLC.
I'll make a motion for, to approve Resolution 2017-9 to finally move forward with this project.
Motion made by Jim, seconded by Chad, approve Resolution 2017-9 approving conditional use permit for Hot House LLC. All in favor signify by saying aye.
I just have a comment on this.
Sure.
It's just that I had some comments made to me that we're spending all this money on plans, and, you know, that was in the plans for residential, and if the medical school does come, we could be setting ourselves up for failure. But I'm not saying we don't want the business, but, you know, we do have an industrial park for it, so I'm just reeling a little side by a few people to me, so.
Understood. Any other discussion?
I'll just answer that this is currently zoned for this. I'm not saying that, you know, I disagree or agree with what was brought to our attention, but currently the zoning allows this. Beyond that, to the north is where it turns into some residential, so.
And I'll add on to the, also to add on back, currently the city does not own, to my knowledge, any property within industrial park zone, so, no. That's all private.
Except for we invested in empty spaces, shovel-ready.
We invested, but we don't own, correct there?
Right, but we invested.
We get it certified.
Okay. Again, motions are made and seconded, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign? Motion carries. Then we move on to the proposed street construction agreement, and Don, I'll give you a little, give us a little background. This is the street that John plans on constructing for this project.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the mayor said, this project, which has now been approved, does entail the construction of a gravel road known as Nicollet Avenue East. All along, when we were told about the project by Mr. Sudbeck, it was discussed that he would be creating that gravel road. We felt it prudent to put this into writing and what's going to happen. The street construction agreement has been viewed by Mr. Sudbeck, does meet with his approval. It spells out that the gravel road will be created according to MNDOT specifications for gravel road. Those specifications are outlined in Exhibit A, which is attached to the agreement in your packet. It also spells out that the maintenance and upkeep of the road will be the responsibility of the city. The city is charged with snow removal and all other tasks that are associated with upkeeping any other city street. It also spells out that Mr. Sudbeck will be held harmless for any lawsuits, any problems associated with the street, with the exception of negligent construction. So if there is negligent construction, we could come back against Mr. Sudbeck, but none of us expect that, and don't think that's going to be an issue. We shall hold Mr. Sudbeck harmless for any other losses, claims, demands, actions associated or stemming from anything with the street. It also makes it clear that Mr. Sudbeck will not be a city employee, will simply be treated as an independent contractor when the street's being constructed. So it's a simple agreement, but we thought we should just spell it out, so it's in black and white. One other thing, Mr. Sudbeck did with the construction of the road, he has made some arrangements for tiling and water drainage. We did get those details after this was put in the packet, but just written detail of what drainage and tiling is going to be done is going to be added to the Exhibit A as well.
And just to back that up, I listened to John himself bring this in front of planning and zoning, and it sounded like a very good construction project. And actually, a lot of recommendations were brought forth by Justin and the DOT specifications that he relayed on to John to come up with some of the depths of the construction material and so forth, so it's. Justin?
As far as the drainage goes, we did do an EDA drainage analysis on the project. I understand you're, you're adding the drain towers, it's kind of an amendment. Just at some point in time, it'll probably have to be a more, a larger storm service installed at some point in time.
Yeah, right.
So just so that's an understanding of, of the folks who are part of the agreement. I'm saying what they're doing is wrong, but we just should be understanding that.
Sure.
Back at the very first meeting that this project, with this first EDA meeting, this project was discussed, and John wasn't there, but one of the board members, EDA board members brought up the issue of down the road, when that street is curbed and gutted and paved, he thought that in the agreement, there should be some clear wording as to what, if any, his, Mr. Sudbeck's obligations would be. And I don't know if John, if you've had anyone discuss that with you, but, you know, would he get credit for the gravel that's there that could be salvaged and then assessed, like everyone, every other property? That was kind of this person's opinion, but I'm just wondering if the agreement addresses that or not.
It doesn't intentionally, because we were talking about how there would be credit given, but with talking with John, it was decided that he wanted to be, so that's why there's no language in there about giving credit of any sort. It's just if, if in the future, and this is probably going to be 10, 20 years down the road, it's just going to be assessed like anything else would.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any questions, council?
I understand we're going to do it to MNDOT, and, you know, Justin weighed in on that. Is, who's, is there going to be an independent inspector of it to make sure that the specifications are meet, or is Justin, we're going to ask Justin to, you know, do that for nothing because he wants to, or something like that?
The, the agreement does contain the language, "The construction of the road must meet all standards determined by the city engineer. Once completed, the road must be approved by the city engineer," so.
Yeah, so that's why I was suggesting Justin would donate that, so.
Basis of Exhibit A, basically from the contract from Melsha, saying that he's going to put X amount of yards of fill and all of that.
Right.
And so I basically took his proposal and just wrote it in here, so he, he's doing.
What it says.
What it says. I'm just, I'm just trying to.
Get it going.
Yeah. I see no problem with it. It's going to be done according to the way it says, it's black and white. So at this point, I'd look for a motion to approve the proposed street construction agreement with John Sudbeck and his hot house project.
Second.
Motion made by Sean, seconded by Jim, to approve the street construction agreement with John Sudbeck and the Hot House LLC. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All same sign? Motion carries. Okay, that takes care of that, then we move on to new business. And 10A is proposed updates to city special assessment policy, Don.
As we've been going through the project for this year that we have the, this public hearing for today, I just be, started to research and just. hearing for today, I just be, started to research and just look at what exactly the city had for special assessment policy. And from working with SEH and just trying to go through city records, it doesn't look like the city has a per se actual policy that you can hold and look at. It's just the, the policies have been determined throughout the last 10 years. When there's been a project, there's been a document that just spells out what the assessment policy is. And so what I'm just asking for approval, to get your thoughts of tonight, I've showed you an example of what an actual special assessment policy looks like. I would like to simply create that for Gaylord, bring it back to you for approval. I think we should have a document like this, just so we're not looking back to projects from 2007, 2009. We just, we have the documents to look at and use always.
I think with the potentials, what's going to happen to the next project, we should have that in place.
Yes.
Is there any talk about looking at how that's, like the trenchless aspect of it? I mean, I don't know what the rest of the council thinks. We're just going to let the process play out, or?
I think that with the recommendations of our city engineers saying that's the way that nor, the norm is.
Right. I, I'm just trying, I guess I got a question. I mean, if, if it's, is it poss, is it a possible option that is part of this policy, that the trenchless per se the, would be, say the pipe bursting would be considered because of trenchless technology, whatever, the city feels that only 25% of the amount or 50% of the amount would be assessed out? Or, or no, is that?
I, I think the council does have discretion and it does have the ability to make interpretations and policy decisions about what certain things will be assessed at. We just want to be consistent across the board. But I think it could be justified in saying, because this is a trenchless technology, it may be different. So you could assess it differently. And do you guys have comments on that?
Yeah, I think you're right. There's a certain level of discretion. The recommendations that friend and I made were based on what we see down in the communities. And just the idea that this is a complete, very strong, complete install, for example, without a pump driving. You know, going back to what you mentioned just a minute ago, Chad, assessing it only at 25%, that's in fact what we're doing.
No, I get, I get that.
75% of that cost due to pipe bursting on the church property is attributed to citizens of Gaylord.
You mean as a rule, the assessment policy, like 20 to 25% of that cost is assessed out? Is that what you mean?
I'm saying in this specific case for American Lutheran Church, that $25,000 assessment is only 25%.
Of the cost, right.
And isn't there a statutory limit? And in the 429 process, isn't there a limit that you can assess a benefiting property owner? So you can't go, I don't think you can go even close to 55, or 50%?
Well, I think what we're getting back into is the spin because it's the church and so forth again. But getting back to Don's deal, I think we should have a policy in place. And we can always divvy off of that policy through assessment hearings if we want to and, and so forth. But I don't think we want to get into specifics on.
Setting the assessment, right.
Setting the assessment by each individual project, because we're going to have pages upon pages.
I, I could see having wording in here on, that would cover the, the CIP or the pipe burst, on what, what our belief would be on that. But I totally agree, we should have a policy. That's the policy. And that's what we always, because this is, this is the first church. There's, there's going to be others.
It's, it's not the first.
They're going to get reassessed when we redo that street?
No.
Correct.
The churches that went by with the new streets already been assessed fully, with the street and the sewer and water that went right by here. And so it's. So then, so that's, that's why it's, go back to the policy. We just need that policy outlined. And then it goes up to each discretion and each individual after the.
I think where the angst comes is because you don't see the dirt. You don't see the hole. I mean.
Well, they were seeing a hole.
Therefore, it appears to be repairs, not a reconstruct.
Right, there you go.
You know, right, wrong. And I, I just think that's.
But the conception, we got to get out there. This is not the only church in town that's ever been assessed. That is false.
But to the suggestion, I would certainly think we should ask Don to draft a assessment policy to put in our city policy.
100% in agreements with that. So consensus is that we need to get that done, Don, and then present it at a next council meeting or whenever you got time to get it, next couple of council meetings.
If it's not the first meeting in June, it'll be the second.
Okay. Okay, then I'm moving on to 10B, and that's a quick discussion on the Meadowwood property. It's been brought to my attention by Ty on some, we went away from renting that farmland out because of the project that was in front of us at one point with maybe developing that, which has since fallen through. And we don't have nothing else in place on that. Instead of spending the money on disking that two, three times a year, whatever it costs, I think it's approximately 700 bucks a time or something like that it was. Suggestions made to rent that back out for farmland again, so we don't have to do that. And it'd have to come back up to council since we went away from it and it wasn't in the agreement with the particular farmer before. If we want to put that back into farmland again, I would suggest we would. It saves some money, even if we didn't get any rent off it, if he just keep it so we didn't have weeds in it anymore. But the rent was pretty low anyway that we were getting from him per acre.
But we had to post that in the past, didn't we?
I thought so.
What we've, what we've done is we've basically accepted bids for farming it. This was a special situation, though, where it was under lease. And the lease actually goes for at least another year. It's just that we had a, we had a clause in that lease that allowed us just to back out for development. So we did that when the foxes came. Had we not done that, we, that lease with that particular farmer would still be going.
So would it be reasonable to say that we could go back to him and say, do you want it? Without having to put it on for bids?
That's essentially what we're asking for approval to do.
Because we did multiple parcels, right, as far as that process.
I think we should certainly do that.
Save some maintenance and make a couple of bucks.
So with that, I'd look for a motion to put that back into farmland with the.
Current lease?
Current lease.
So moved.
Motion made by Sean, seconded by Jessica, to put that back into farmland with the curse, current lease. And I guess any other discussion? Not all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. So I'll leave it up to Kim or Ty to move that forward, whoever. Or between the two of you, please.
John's got a question.
John?
I just want to thank everybody for helping me get through this. I do appreciate it.
I'm sorry for the delay, but we got to the end zone.
Thanks for bearing with us, John. The process can be painful for us too sometimes.
I definitely understand. I just want, like I said, I just kind of appreciate everybody. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to the end of our agenda. Any closing comments from council? If not, I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made by Jessica, seconded by Sean to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.